Hello. Hello.
Hello. We can hear you.
Hello.
Yeah. I'm at planning board meeting. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
It took me a fine to find the microphone. Everybody got their big drawing, right? Right.
They didn't give me a big drawing.
I think Joe Carrery did not get a big drawing, but that would be my fault because I was not here when he picked it up. But everybody else should have gotten a drawing.
All right, I'll call the October meeting of the Tustin Town Planning Board to order. If everybody would join me in a place of the flag, I'd greatly appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, if you could read the minutes from last month's meeting?
A regular meeting of the town and Tustin Planning Board was held on September 21st via Zoom with the following members present. Ed Jackson, Chairman, Ken Beam, Joe Carrery, Sean Harrington, John Kaufman, Mary Bermudez, Kathleen Hankins, and absent was Barry Becker. Others present approximately seven members of the general public along with Crystal Weston, Town Clerk. The regular meeting was opened at 7:30 PM following the Pledge of Allegiance. Resolution 3620 on motion by Carrery, second by Bermudez, the following resolution was adopted, A7, N0. Resolve to accept August 2020 minutes. Old business, Feagles Lake presented new maps and the proposed Phase 1 and 2 were reviewed. The design work on the dam has the road updated and the engineers for wetland were there. And there's crusher run and crusher, and there's crush stone and crusher run on the dam. Two fire trucks can fit side by side and the cul-de-sac is 1100 foot. On the maps presented, Phase 1 is in yellow and Phase 2 is in orange. The utilities will be propane, gas, electric, septic and wells. Each lot will have a well and septic. The perk test will be done by local people familiar with the land. The right of way coming in from 97 near the dam is not listed on the map. The board needs a total number of lots being proposed. Some lots are extremely large, about 50 acres. Near the first gate, there are 15 to 16 lots and there may be a separate subdivision. The applicant will proceed with the plan for the entire 380 acres and include the lots and roads. Copies of the maps and plans need to be available one week in advance before the scheduled meetings. Our town engineer will need the information two weeks in advance for his review. One copy will need to be mailed to Jackie a week in advance. Department of Health will need to review plans if more than five lots in a subdivision. If the acres are more than 5.1, no Department of Health review needed. Copies are needed, copies are needed of the dam wetlands slope analysis. The dam main access, stormwater designs and analysis of the pond. There being no other board or public comment, the meeting adjourned at 8:07 PM.
Any corrections or additions? Just want to put a motion on the floor. I'm sorry, Sean, what did you have? Oh, you lit up. I thought maybe you said, I'll put a motion on the floor, on the table. To accept the minutes as read.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Joe Carrery. All right, we have no old business tonight at all. Oh, I'm sorry. No new business tonight. The only, in fact, the only thing we have before us is, is Feagles Lake and the two lot combination. The special use permit on Main Street was withdrawn. If everybody receives the new drawing, I'll have Chuck review some of it with his, with his, some of his comments.
Sure, Ed, thank you. The board should have received our comment letter dated October 15th, 2020. And this essentially is really the first, you know, preliminary review with the look at this project and the information. And what we tried to do in this letter is just simply outline some additional information that we would be looking for. Excuse me, through the course of the project. And then highlight some obvious, you know, things that certainly Dan and his team will be working on as the product evolves. We don't expect, you know, a lot of the information to be ready, you know, right away simply because, you know, Dan and his group are going to need time to pull this material together and they're still kind of finalizing their designs and working on their plans. So we, you know, we fully understand that, you know, it's still a work in progress very much. But we just wanted to highlight, you know, some of the basic things for the board. You know, certainly, you know, I can, I'm not going to run through them all unless the board has questions. But just some of the general comments were, you know, to make sure that we had a formal application on file. Excuse me. We're also looking for a project narrative that completely describes really all aspects of the project. And this is just certainly helpful when, you know, the board looks to build its record and have that information on hand, certainly as you go forward. Some of the other basic things certainly, you know, that we're going to see as the product evolves or any deeds, easements, right of ways. Oftentimes, large tracts of property will have easements or right of ways on them that don't always pop up during the review process. So, you know, we just want to make sure that we have those properly indicated on the plans going forward as Dan starts to pull his information together. Just kind of going down through it, obviously, you know, we're in the Upper Delaware scenic and recreational river corridor. So the council will be involved. I think Ed mentioned that to the board last time. So, you know, again, we just wanted to memorialize that and Dan and his crew are certainly aware of that. The wetlands delineations, we understand, are still in, in work. So Dan will provide those, I'm sure, when they're ready to go. And certainly, you know, we can go over those and discuss those with the board as, as things evolve. Let's see, we're going to want to see, you know, some more detailed information on the wells that they're proposing and well tests. We understand that there's certainly going to be septics on the site. So again, we're going to want to maybe see some perk tests, you know, as they start to identify building sites and understanding how those sites are going to perk in terms of, you know, suitable septic. We're going to want to see a SWIP, a full SWIP for the project, you know, that's the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan and a management plan. Certainly that'll evolve as they, they move forward with their designs. You know, the dam itself and the dam safety report. Again, you know, provided a lot of information, but, you know, we're going to want to take a look at that in closer detail certainly. And then as the road gets finalized, the road design gets finalized across the dam into the site. And then certainly out onto 97, we're going to want to see, you know, some more details on that and that'll be forthcoming, I'm sure. With, with Dan and his group. Just kind of looking down through here. You know, we certainly mentioned the preservation of trees on site and to try and identify those sites. And I know the applicant in their opening remarks to the board were very sensitive to maintaining that very rural forested feel of the site. That's one of its true assets, which brings value to that site. So I'm sure as we move forward, those, those new house lots will be laid out to really avoid, you know, massive tree clearing or parcel clearing, things like that. But again, we just wanted to kind of point that out. You know, we have some technical stuff in there as we start to look through the reports and you'll see some of that. We try not to make our comments, you know, overly technical when we start to break down some of the engineering reports and things, but at the same time, we want to make sure that the applicants have the proper detail in those reports so that they're accurate and, you know, so the board can, can have some level of, you know, full understanding as to really what they mean. And we'll, we'll certainly help the board understand that better as those plans and reports are developed. Obviously, you know, we've been looking at the secret aspects of the project and that's why we had requested a full environmental assessment form versus a short form. It's a larger project. It's a major subdivision. A full EF certainly is warranted, so. But other than that, you know, this is kind of how we lay out our context letters. I know this might be one of the first times that the board has seen us kind of pulled the other some of our comments. As we get more information from the applicant, certainly, you know, the letters, we try not to make our letters overly long simply because, you know, we just don't believe that that always works very well. But at the same time, we want to highlight, you know, the major issues for the board, some of the minor engineering details. You know, we can certainly work out with the applicant, but, you know, going forward, this is kind of the format that you'll see. So if the board has any questions on, on any of this, I can certainly address that. Or I know the applicant is going to be responding to these as well, probably later this week. And I'm sure they're going to pride the board with those comments. We've also offered to meet with the applicant and their design professionals to go over any comments or certainly, you know, work with them cooperatively to, to make sure that they understand, you know, the things that we're asking for. And I know, you know, Dan and his team will, will certainly do a nice job in responding to this, so. But if the board has any questions, I can certainly help out now.
If anybody has any questions, pipe up.
Have we considered whether you're doing individual septic and wells as opposed to joining the town water and sewer system?
Yeah, that's been declared already.
And what was the response?
Each lot will have its own well and its own septic.
Okay.
Is there any thoughts of a homeowners association to maintain these private roads?
Yes, Stuart does plan on having a private association for maintaining these roads.
Okay, thank you. I hadn't seen anything yet, so I was wondering.
Not a problem.
And what about the road going in that's there existing already down after the existing building? Has that been addressed as too narrow and to not just be able to sustain an ambulance or a fire engine?
Okay, yeah, right now, if you look where the road proposes from the existing store and it goes all the way from, it's an existing logging road that goes from one side all the way over to the other side of 96. If you look along the road, we had noted three sections where it doesn't meet the minor road standards, which will have to be upgraded. And there, if you read right across, the first one is 150 feet. And then 350 feet on the top and at the very other end, there is another section of 140 feet there.
Dan, I just gave you control of the mouse. If you just click on your screen, this way you can zoom in. I know Shannon, she's from the UDC, she does not have a map. And Joe, unfortunately, that was my fault. He wasn't able to get one. Thank you.
I got a copy.
Okay, just once.
Wonderful, wonderful, good.
So let me get this down.
And I have a question also for you too.
So this is the main road here, existing logging road.
Yep.
There's a section in here that we point out from the surveyor. It's about 150 feet. That's just over 15% right in here. There's a section from here to here that's about 350 feet of it. That's over, it's about 18 to 20% that needs to be corrected. And then down in this little corner here, there's a spot of 140 feet. That's between 20 and 22% that needs to be corrected. Right in this general area here. And as we get into detailed design, that will be corrected.
Can we, I have a question about the lot sizes. Can you just scroll your map down a little bit? So we're more towards the beginning of the, into the yellow, yellow section. Did we discuss, Ed, or anybody know of the fact that those lot size are much smaller? Were they supposed to be adjusted or not? Ed, anybody?
I think that's fine. That's the size they wanted them.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they all meet at least the three acres and if they've got the 300 feet of road frontage.
Yeah. Did you? Okay.
Dan, as we discussed earlier in the week, the gray section that you're kind of almost into now, the parcel that's going to be sold off, how is that going to affect the private roads?
Dan, you muted yourself?
There you go. This area right in here is, everything in gray is Phase 3. Right now, Stuart is not interested in developing this even to the detail of the septic. So we were, we wanted to ask the question of, basically, if this road still went through from one side to the other and was, you know, a legal minor road for the, for the private association. But he wanted to subdivide this off. How to deal with it later, not design it now? How do we handle that? That was a question that we want to know how to go about it because he's not interested in designing that now to sell lots now or anything like that.
But if you have the designated lots and you allocate and provide that it can perk, I think Ed.
I'm listening.
Yeah, I mean, at least, at least provide the basics than just a, here's a, here's dead man's land, you know, kind of thing. That at least the basics are there for future development and/or to sell off that you've got, it's already been designated and delineated.
Right. What, what he, what he has here is he just shows a, a concept that if it got subdivided off and say he did want to sell it to another developer or keep it down the road, it could change is what I'm saying. This road is here, but if they had a new. So that's what, he, he didn't want to get into doing the septic for each lot and well. It's a lot of money there. He just wanted to be able to leave that land alone. And however, the town would allow him to deal with it either later or selling it later without doing all the testing.
Well, the only testing, wouldn't the only testing really just being that the land is perkable?
I mean, it depends if you want.
Wells are going to be something else down the road. You can't determine wells until you drill.
I guess that would be what, you know, if you wanted individual lots, that's a lot of perk tests. That's all I'm getting to. And they get pretty expensive and I don't think he wanted to go to that level yet.
My concern, my concern is if it's sold at a later date.
Yep.
One person buys it and closes the road, we're in trouble.
No.
Yep.
We want to, this road right here somehow in his association right now with his, his private road association will always be deeded to be open, period, no matter who bought this. Even if it was subdivided off, this, this will be legally, you know, legally a private association road that goes from one end to the other.
What about the people that live on it at a later date?
That's something that'll be worked within, within it. I mean, they'll have to have access to that road at a future date. But it's there to use, just like, just like any road on a main.
The question is really just traffic control. It will always be available for emergency egress in both directions, but in the absence of an emergency, we may, and I'm not saying it's clear yet, we may decide to just restrict the access for the 10 lots to go in and to go out, but not to traverse across the whole mountain and create traffic up there. We want to try to keep it as private and as, you know, unused as, as possible. And, and they really wouldn't have a reason to go, you know, out and over, except in a dire emergency. That's just.
If the dam was to wash out.
No, that has no impact. No, no, we're talking about the 10 lots in the back. We always call it gate number one, the northernmost gate. If the dam washes out, it has no effect on them. We, we won't restrict the use on the, on the dam egress. It's, it's really just, and we won't restrict the use on any road in the case of emergency. It's just in a non-emergency situation, we've created these two or three large lots up at the top and we would want to preserve as much privacy up there as, as we can. So you would just direct the traffic out from these 10 lots onto 97 through their gate. And if for some reason that gate was blocked in an emergency, then they would come out the other way. That's, it's fairly simple. If it's controversial, it's not a major, it's not a major point. It's, it's something we're open. We're open to discussion on, I'm just thinking, it, it seems at this point better to just say that the traffic may be controlled in some manner just to preserve privacy with no other reason.
What is your actual intent with these 10 lots? Do you want to futurably sell them or make it a package to somebody? Or as you said, thank three to the development of, of this?
Well, what I was thinking, it's, it's kind of, it's, 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 it's really going to be a market dependent, market-driven decision. I may not sell it to one person. I may, there may be three or, three or two or four local people, developers who, who are interested in, you know, taking their own creative approach to two or three houses. From what I'm hearing and feeling in the market, it's just purely selling vacant land is, is, is not the way things are going. People don't want to really necessarily build their own houses, especially at this price point. So there, my thinking is that there may be two or three people who are fully capable and known in the area and have a following in the area and let two or three people kind of, you know, develop it within certain guidelines, within aesthetic guidelines, within price guidelines, within size guys, guidelines. Let them each have their own unique way of building the houses. I, it's just not something I, I, I don't want to bill actually this, but I want to see this project through in a way that makes it beautiful. And like, there's one guy, Josh Felderstein. He's, he's experimenting or working with modular type of house. And there may be other people who have other, other ways of, of putting, putting these houses up in, in a efficient and, and market responsive way. And I'm not sure. It's, it's not something I would want to do, but there may be several people who come forward and we would say, okay, you take these three lots, you take these three lots, you take these three lots or whatever it is. And as long as you stay within certain guidelines of, again, price and aesthetics and size.
Do you have needed guidelines and stuff as to what they can build? Is that, do you have that footprint done like they've done up in Eagles Nest? Like. Natural environment.
12. Yeah, yeah. 1200, 1300, 1400 seems to be the, the sweet spot in the market. That might change. There may be, you know, we may come up with several, you know, a modern type of house, a farmhouse kind of house, an A-frame kind of house. But just, just, you know, not using plastic materials, not making something ugly that would draw the whole project down. The idea is to keep this, you know, aesthetically as nice as possible. It's a beautiful site. It's a beautiful town where we all see how it's, it's developing in the Main Street and the businesses. And I, I'm, you know, we just want to see how it can mutually. want to see how it can mutually evolve together.
There's a variety of contractors that are building in the area like Josh, like Modern Catskills. You know, Skill Farms, Justin Time. So there's, you know, a variety of, of higher end, you know, more, you know, modern, classic, you know, styled homes than doing your, your, you know, throwing in a, a modular or a trailer, you know?
I'm not saying a modular. Yeah. I'm not saying it's modular. It's apparently that there's certain people are experimenting with par, not modular houses, panelized houses. I don't want to, and, and all, i- if I had my dream, all the people you mentioned would, would, would get involved in this project. I have no, my real desire here is to, is to take this to a point where it's all very clear. It's all very well-designed. And then let any of those people come in and build houses on site. I, I'm, I'm, it's, it's open to everyone. I'm, I'm not a builder by trade and I'm, I'm reaching the age where I don't want to really start anything that, that new. And I would say it's a very, it's an open field. The guys who build, if they, if, if they have a customer and they like a lot, they can, and they just stay within certain parameters, then let them build the house the way they, they want. As long as it's not ugly and as long as it's not, you say cheesy modular.
Well, there's great modulars and they're getting the container homes. Those are all fabulous. You know, so there's a lot of nudity.
Right. I'm not closing.
But it's that if you're going to be setting guidelines for building that they have to go by the basics so that, you know, crap doesn't get thrown in there, you know?
Exactly. That's, I, I completely agree. And, and that's, you know, we're, I, I don't know what I'm saying that is leading you not to understand that I'm in complete agreement. We don't want crap. We want high quality stuff. And it's just, I see this as a little bit of an experiment because, because the real problem in the market is getting really good quality stuff built at certain price points. And, you know, if, if, if you, if it can be done with stick building, great. If it can be done with high-quality panelized construction, the great. And I'm, I'm, I, I, I agree. No, no crap. I mean, put it into two words or less.
I have a question. So I have a question. So suffice to say at this point in this area itself, this is just a, a concept that eventually you would want someone to come in and purchase it or, or build it, whatever. But I know that we had asked as the board to give us, you know, the whole full view of the concept of what you were doing. And I'm, I'm very, I'm suffice to say, I'm fine with this. I think this is wonderful. But, you know, at this point, I respect your wishes as to you don't want to get into building it, but it's nice to know that this is the concept. At the same time, I, I agree with Barry that there has to be some type of.
Guidelines.
Yes. What exactly.
Absolutely.
These lots should be, how much, you know, what the building should be, everything like that. And I'm fine with that as long as it's in writing.
I totally. I, I mean, the way we look at this is there are going to be several price points. There are these enormous lots on the, on the top and I, you know, I, I'll just say right up front, I'm not, again, I'm, I'm getting past the stage where, you know, I would want to build myself a, a, a castle up on the top of the hill and someone else hopefully does. And, and that, that, that probably won't be done by, you know, the, the Catskill Farms or one of those that they may have their own custom design brought in from someplace else. And that's, that's also completely fine. It's, it, you know, there, there should be some very expensive homes up on the top. There should be some, it's somewhat, you know, larger homes around the lake. And then in the back, let, let these five acre lots be market responsive. And that way we have kind of three different levels and, and add a little bit of, you know, we're not trying to turn this into a cookie cutter where they used to do it in the eighties or seventies and every lot is a little postage stamp and every house is the same. Let it have diversity to it within parameters. And I, believe me, I want to be strict on the parameters. You guys want to be strict. I want to be strict too, because as it evolves, you, 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 you don't want people to come in and ruin the rest of the, of the property. So I, I have the greatest incentive in keeping things within parameters.
Because this whole section right here is actually a calling card to the development. You know, it's one of the main entrances coming in. So on whatever goes in here is a reflection of what's going to happen with the end and what the perception is going to be.
Yes. Yes. Also the lake, with the lake is where we're concentrating first and we're trying to get the chalet finished. The, the windows were bought and ordered and paid for in August. And I've been told again and again, COVID, 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 COVID. And that's why it's not going anyplace. I'm a little bit, say the least frustrated that we haven't been able to move that along any more quickly than it's moving, but we're trying our best. This, this, this year has been tough. But we're going to do a very nice job there. Ed Crowley's been in, he's met the contractor who's related Gary Peak's nephew and he built my house for me a few years ago. And he like, and, and sees the quality of the work and it's just, we can't move any faster on it given the supply chain problems. I just want to make it clear. That's why the thing is sort of sitting there.
Are you developing the yellow area yourself?
That one I may be more involved in. Yes. I, that's my thinking. Again, the, yes, but the way it gets developed will be dependent on the first step is just feeling out the market for the lakefront house and, you know, whether someone's going to come in at one price point and keep one size lot or come in at a different price point and want two or more lots. We're going to let, let the market determine that in, hopefully in the spring.
Well, it's happening now. So, I mean, people are building because inventory is low. So.
I would be building two if I could get supplies. We're, we've run into log jams. It's.
Tripled and quadrupled in price.
Yes. But we just can't even get the windows. They were ordered. They were promised. They were supposed to be here sometime middle of September. And here we are in the middle of October and I don't have any windows. My hubris is put the electric in. We're just waiting, you know, we're just.
Stuart, would the gray area, would that be part of the homeowners association?
I would guess to some extent, in, 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 in terms of road maintenance, yes. In terms of noise restrictions, yes. In terms of, you know, possible, again, Airbnb restrictions, yes. We want to, there will be an over, a, a master agreement that, that puts, puts some level of predictability in, into, into the use of the, of the property. Yes. It may be, again, I'm not sure the exact structure. If you would have two or one or just, it, 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 but yes, they would all come under one, one association, one road. One, one maintenance plan on the road. And the dam. I mean, you know, because that's, you know, again, a, a long-term, long-term maintenance of the trees and of the shrubs and make sure that, that, that the D E C was very concerned about growth, you know, keeping the dam under safe. So, yeah.
Now, do you, do you intend to put parkland in or are you going to give us cash and a little parkland?
I don't even know about that. Do, do you want to explain? Well, I don't, how much parkland are we? I know there's an area around the, the, the wetlands. I didn't know about the parkland issue till now. What is, what? Should we discuss it now or is it something we could discuss separately? I don't, I don't know what.
I hear somebody talk.
How, how much parkland? Can you hear me?
Yes, but off the top of my head, I don't know the formula to be honest with you.
All right, then we'll talk, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss it. I, I really haven't thought about it. I don't know what's involved and we can, you could talk to Dan and me and we'll figure it out.
And, and he did mention about this lot right here, gifting it over to the town. It's like five acres in here for a park or whatever you want to make of it. That's something he did mention early on.
What five acres?
The parkland has to be dedicated to the, to the subdivision.
Okay. I'm just saying that was something I wanted to bring up again.
Yeah.
You know, part of it, you know, again, if, if we get the, if we get some more detail on it, it maybe, I, I, we, maybe we can work it in or maybe not. We'll just balance it out, but maybe you could let Dan know what the formula is.
Yeah.
What area were you looking at? I, I don't see where you're pointing here.
We're not pointing at anything right now, Barry. We're trying to establish it.
No, I was talking about the five acres that he said.
Yeah, he mentioned five acres.
It's the last, it's the last on the roadside of the lake.
Right here to the right.
Wasn't that originally a common ground for the original homeowners association?
That was, you know, that was for phase one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Apparently was, it's not really clear what happened. I don't know if it was ever deeded. I think we still own the deed. It was never deeded out. Or maybe we could do something with that property. Again, I don't know what, this, this is a new issue. I don't really know what it.
Steve Adler.
I mean, maybe we could develop that.
Well, he said that that five acres was going to, were going to be the parkland for all the lots on the, on the roadside of the lake.
Yeah.
How many acres are involved in the parkland? We, we don't know.
Well, I could, I could pull the maps for, I can't think of the name of it now. Wyden Lake. And see what.
I didn't have parkland, Ed. Wyden Lake does not have parkland. That's just community homeowners association owned.
Yeah, that's, that's.
They were done before parkland. They were done before parkland.
Excuse me. This is the attorney for the planning board. There is an entire section in the town code under subdivisions. It's section 24122 that describes parkland as a major subdivision. There are lots of requirements. So the applicant might want to review that section of the subdivision code.
We did look through that stuff and we're still reviewing it. It was just with the formulas that were in there, it was hard to find them.
Thank you, Jackie. I appreciate that.
Jackie, we'll look it up and we'll discuss it with Chuck Foss. But as we looked at it, it looked like there was a lot of up to discretion of the planning board as well with the size. But we'll look, we'll go over it again.
And, and even though it is within the planning board's discretion, it's still the applicant's obligation to put forth the proposal.
Sure. We just need to know how much to, to start the conversation.
Are there any other questions from anybody on the new drawing? Which are you, when you do the next one, are you going to put in the, the numbers on the top post?
Yeah, we told the surveyor the drawing was so big and they even have some stuff down to a level of one foot that you wouldn't be able to read, but the surveyor was told to make it more legible or we'll break the sheets up so there, the sheets are more legible and it's not one big plan.
Yeah, that would, that would be.
That's the best way. Cause then it'll make them legible for you.
Yeah, Dennis is Chuck. That would certainly work. You know, keep one master.
Yeah.
Overall plan and then maybe break it up into three sheets or whatever works best for you guys, just to show that level of detail.
Okay. We'll just use that and do a key map to show you which sheet is which and go from there. Not a problem.
And this is Shannon from the Upper Delaware Council. I just have one question on this map. So there's the three phases. Can someone explain what the, what the estate lots are and what, what phase that would be part of, or if that's just being untouched, or can you just explain that big section?
Right now Stuart has three of them proposed on the top. This road, we would like to put into the minor road standards. And then as far as the three proposed home locations, I mean, when someone buys these, they are subject to change probably a little bit with whoever would buy them. But I do know that we wanted to do perk tests in certain locations to make sure they perked. You know, your well yield tests and also make sure we met your requirements for, for the Delaware. And I know you're, you're not supposed to be a hundred feet from a, a ledge and things like that with the structure and whatever else we have to meet with rules, we will during that design.
Okay. But so these are going to be larger, single-family homeowner lots. They're just larger than this, the smaller subdivided parcels.
Depending on who Stuart gets to buy them.
Okay, thank you.
This lot right here is, let me, let me make this a little bit bigger for us. That's 60, looks like 61 acres, 71 acres, and then 45 for this one.
Okay.
Maybe able to subdivide?
No. Go ahead.
I was just asking if these three larger lots could subdivide if somebody were to buy one and they're so large.
We do show lot lines right now for them. But it's part of, you know, his estate lots that he had.
I think they may, they may be family compound type of lots, but again, this is, this is something, I think the market is evolving and my thought again is I may be off, I may be off the mark or maybe not. We'll see how things go. But my idea was that they should not be subdivided. They could be, you could have multiple homes under one family unit if they chose to, but not to permit them to be subdivided. The whole idea is to keep this low impact. And if you go up and look at the lots and if you start dividing them up into little, you know, five, six, seven, eight, nine acres, you kind of lose the beauty of the whole thing. And there are certain things which, certain things which at certain times become more valuable if you leave them larger than smaller.
No, sure. No, I mean, I was just looking for what the basic parameters were that were being set. Because as a realtor, people are going to say, great lot. I got a, a road running through there. Can I subdivide this up into three or four different lots?
No.
You know?
No, we don't. That's not how. No, because that ruins, you know, the whole idea is we're not putting in a, a, a map, you know, we're not putting in a, a heavy, we're, we're not trying to create a heavy usage of, of property and property, and we want everyone who buys a piece of property to understand that it isn't going to be a heavy, heavily used property, so there will have to be restrictions put on those lots, you know?
And I would assume that would be in the deed or the, the property when it's sold. Am I correct? You know, when you buy, when you buy a piece of property, there are covenants on the property itself. I would assume, Chad, you would be doing that with the big pieces of property to keep the natural beauty of those lots.
Stuart, my son. Yes, but, but it's Stuart, my son, this is, my son sat at the computer and I.
Oh, sorry, okay, Stuart.
And I, and I have no idea, I would have no, I would not be on, on Zoom tonight if it wasn't for my son. Somehow, I don't know what happened.
But, but I, I would assume.
But yes, they would be deed.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I'm, I'm, or I, I think Richard Bound is going to work with us on those things. He has a full title report. We, it took months to get it. They were very slow down in the courthouse. And he'll be working, yeah, he told me there, you know, as far as deed restrictions, as far as noise restrictions, as far as homeowners, everyone, I think everyone in the area knows him pretty well, and I think he knows what he's, his way around subdivisions.
Thank you.
Past.
Are there any other questions?
I just want one question. So just to be clear, we're talking single-family homes on all of these lots, different square footages, but the minimum square footage as per town code, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ed, can I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Mary.
No, this is Jackie, your attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I make a comment? Is it okay if I make, if I jump in here?
Yeah, sure, do as.
So I'm just going to make a suggestion, because I've heard a lot of discussion about the, the use of the property, the design of what the homes will look like, so that they are, you know, I guess, I guess the applicant is looking for more luxury homes. And since there's going to be a homeowners association to maintain the road, I'm assuming that this homeowners association is also going to be responsible for the common area that's identified, and it looks like there's a dock as well. It's not uncommon for the bylaws or the rules and regulations for the homeowners association to also have architectural requirements, design standards, really detailing, you know, down to the types of natural materials, and all of the things that, you know, may be of a concern to the planning board members, could be addressed through a homeowners association, but that's something, it's kind of a big undertaking for the applicant to put that all together, and I understand the applicant's plan is not necessarily to develop, but to just do the subdivision, sell vacant parcels, and then whoever wants to build, whether it's a private individual or a company can do that, which is fine. But if the applicant is going to create a homeowners association, then as the sponsor is going to have to make arrangements to run that association, because these lots are not all going to be sold in the first six months. It's going to take time before the lots are sold, the homes come in, so it's going to need to have a provision in place to keep the HOA going. I mean, if you've only got two homes that are built, somebody's got to be responsible for, you know, maintaining snow plowing and whatnot. So that's the, the first thing. The other thing is the, the, hold on. The, the multiple phone, homes in a family unit, the family compound concept. That may not be consistent with the zoning code. Most, most zoning codes only permit one residence per parcel. So if the applicant is contemplating a number of homes on one large lot, might want to take a closer look at the zoning code.
Okay, that's a very important point, right? I, I guess, well, would, how would we approach that with a, with a variance? I mean, if it was strict, if the deed was very clear that you were only allowed to put multiple buildings that were owned by one family. How would we, surely it's not, we have enough acreage to support any more homes. I don't know how, what would be the method? Would we get a variance for the lot?
That would need to be a use variance. And I'm not sure that that's, well, I guess if you wanted to do that as part of the application for the subdivision, so that certain parcels could be used in a way that is not permitted under the code, you would need to make that application to the ZBA. And, and if you are hiring.
Unless it. You, wait, yeah.
Just gonna unmute myself.
I can't hear you.
If you.
I'll ask Richard about that.
Yeah, use variances are very, very difficult. You have to show a number of factors. They're all detailed in the zoning code, but if you're going to hire Richard Bound to get involved, he's very familiar with the process. But that's a separate application.
All right, well, it may not be. It, it, it may not be a variance, maybe there's another way. We, he can discuss it with you, and we can try to figure it out. Because it is important that someone is not restricted to just one, one building on those lots. People may come in, they may want guest house, or whatever. I, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, sir. The, the.
Yeah.
The landowners will be restricted by the requirements of the town code. If the purchaser does not want to be restricted, then they're going to have to seek a variance. But, you know, whatever you put on, in a deed is not binding on the town. The, the town is going to go by the requirements in the town code, regardless of what you put in the deed. So if you put something in the deed that the town doesn't permit, then the town's not going to permit it.
I would like to interject it at this point, too, that being a realtor, that, and under the COVID conditions under which things are evolving, that families are coming more together. So when you're looking at a family, one family residence, you know, to have the, the in-laws, an in-law home and/or guest house, not to build a colony or a bunch of camps or whatever within, but to kind of keep the family together to have a guest house slash in-law home on the property. So I'm just saying, these are issues that are coming up now, and I'm confronting with people what they're asking for. So whether it requires a variance within our township, and each township is different. So these are things that are coming up, and people are asking for. I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, I, I don't see those types of guest houses or accessory apartments as a permitted accessory use in the, in the residential districts, but that's something that I guess the applicant's going to have to take a closer look at.
It looks like it goes beyond, according to what Barry's saying, it, it, it's, it's a more general question that's coming up beyond just us. I don't know how. Is, is this something the planning board gets involved in, or is it just? Has anyone really thought about it?
That's in the code book. It's already written.
All right. I mean, I just. I guess this is a new, it's a new issue. We'll have to, but Barry is right. I, it, as you, as this COVID evolves, I, I think, and, and just generally what I'm hearing in from people that are, are out in the Hamptons, people are buying the house next door just so they can bring their family close by, and it, it is bringing people together like that. So I, I guess we'll have to think about it. I, I don't know what the, what the best solution is to dealing with the zoning.
Yeah, Stuart, I think mentioning is if we wanted to go to the ZBA and come up with a proposal, like some concept, it's not a use, but if you could bring it to the ZBA, and the argument to the ZBA of a concept, you know, the ZB would look at it, and that's when they'd say yes or no, right there.
Yeah, all the requirements.
Right.
Right, and they're not looking to build a glamping section, or, or a multiple cabin arrangement. They're looking at just trying to create a family compound. So when you look at the green areas of three lots up there, when you're looking at forty, seventy acre lots, and to think that it's just going to be just one house where you can't build something for your parents, you know, to come and go, I mean, that's just what I've been coming across with people in, in selling today. So.
Our code does not allow that. If they want to do, do that, then they would have to cut it up into two lots, and you can put two houses.
Right, but you can't.
I agree.
That's what I asked about earlier.
We don't want all of a sudden this great idea, and then this, then they're bringing in, okay, let's put this house, this house, this house, and this house. Well, that's not, that's not what you want, and that's not up to code. You know, and like Ed said.
You're not developing a camp.
You want to divide it.
Developing a.
Yeah, but that's not what the code allows.
Right, right, no, I'm not, I'm just, all I'm doing is throwing the ideas out of what I'm being hit with every day from people looking for properties up here.
Right, but.
What, what Barry is saying kind of matches with the way we've designed this. I mean, when we built these large lots, we're really thinking that they would be, again, you, when you see them and you understand the beauty of them, you don't want to ruin it by chopping it up and having a driveway and six different people having six different families up there, and it, it produces the beauty and the value of it. But if someone's going to build a main house, and then they've, they've bought fifty or sixty acres, which in theory is, come, under the zoning code would permit the building of ten houses, and they say, well, we'd like a guest house here and a, you know, in-law house there, and a main house here, how, how do we, how do we? We're, we're expressing, I'm expressing an idea that I've had Barry's expressing the same idea, and he's saying it's, it's, it's bubbling up through the market, and then how do we adjust the rules to maintain the, the intent, which is not to have a mess and a, you know, a million people chopping it up, but how do you maintain? How does the town then work with what is being asked for, so that as long as it's maintained as one unit, family unit, that it is zoning compliant? I mean, we're going to have to get some kind of.
Who's going to guarantee that?
Well, you're only looking basically at a trucker, a main house and a guest secondary house. You're not looking to have a children's house here, an in-law house over there, you know, and start, you start developing like ten houses. No, you don't want that. You're looking at a main residence that would house people, and then you're looking at a secondary in-law residence slash.
Our code says one house per parcel.
Yeah, Ed, this is Chuck. If I could just come, jump in, I can add maybe a little clarification for Stuart. Stuart, one of my other hats I wear is a certified planner, and we deal with zoning codes all the time, and we write them for communities. And it's typical in New York State, pretty much in every community that on residentially zoned parcels, you're only allowed one principal dwelling on that lot. And that's a standard uniform that's been set for, you know, a hundred years. The ways to get around that, or to try and, you know, you know, get a variance from that are really two steps. As Jackie said, you can try and get a use variance from the local zoning board, but there's five major criteria that the zoning board has to basically review, and you have to pass, there's five tests to be able to granted that use variance, and they're very difficult. One of them is it can't be self-created. You know, economic hardship doesn't necessarily come into play if there's other alternatives. And your attorney can certainly guide you through that. The other, you know, way that sometimes developers try and work with the local community to grant relief to get what they want, in this case, you know, more than one principal dwelling on a lot, is to have the town board go in and change the zoning. In other words, take the zoning district and ask the town board to basically, you know, change the uses in that district to allow what it is that you want. You'd have to be very specific, obviously. And then the town board, through its legislative authority in New York State, could go in and change its local zoning codes. That's also a very difficult process, and a very lengthy process. Typically, you know, both options don't always work very well. But I certainly agree with what Barry is saying, and I think what, what, you know, you're seeing Stuart across the state is we're starting to see now the ripple effects of the COVID effect, you know, on local communities. And one of those things is the bringing together of the family. For years, you know, young kids wanted to move away from their folks and didn't want to, you know, grow up on the same farmstead and those kinds of things. Well, COVID is really changing that. And I can speak from personal experience, because a neighbor of ours recently had their two adult children and their families basically moved back into the home with them. Created a very crowded situation, but, you know, they got out of the city and wanted to live with their parents. So I also agree that there should be some flexibility, but the codes, the local codes really haven't caught up to that phenomenon yet. So within a year or two, we might see more communities start to shift their codes around to allow in-law apartments or in-law homes in addition to the principal dwelling on a lot, but we just haven't seen it yet. And certainly Tustin doesn't have that in their code yet either, so just a little clarification.
I know one case, pre, pre-COVID out in the Hamptons, I, I know it well, because they, someone bought a lot, it was a large lot, and they, what, they had four kids, and they wanted all the kids to have their own house, but you couldn't subdivide the lot, so they had a designer come in, and it almost looks like a bicycle with five spokes, and it's kind of ridiculous looking, it's ugly, but it's, every child gets their own spoke on the wheel with one, one center. I mean, it's a, it's a crazy solution to a, to a problem. But somehow they got it passed through the local board, but it, it, it just seems, you know, in our family too, our son should be off on his own by now, and because of COVID, he's not, and, and it seems like this is something that a lot of people are thinking about, how to, how to keep families together, especially on large lots. Now, if it's on a five-acre lot, and, you know, you, you know, like, maybe it should be looked at one, one way, but if it's a fifty-acre lot, maybe it should be looked at another way, that's, again, we'll have to, we'll, we'll deal with it as we, as we go along.
As long as you know, when you create that lot of that size, you have created that lot, and then that automatically will stop you from getting a variant, because it's self-created.
Well.
I understand.
Then, then maybe. Let's, the, the, these were, I really appreciate these suggestions, and, and this was extremely helpful in having this issue kind of rise up from this meeting. It's, I guess, it, it's a very important point, and it's, I think it was a very valuable meeting, because this came out of it. it's a very important point and it's, I think it was a very valuable meeting because this came out of it. And we'll have to give it a lot of thought. What we did on the chalet, I mean.
You're breaking up, Stuart.
Can't hear you.
With the idea that someone may come along and say they do want to, let's, let's. When, when, that's, can you hear me or not? Can you hear me? Your mic out?
No, you're in now.
You're good.
Okay. Let me talk to Dan about this and, and I, again, I appreciate that this came up and it's a critical point, a valuable point. And I think we, we learned a lot from this meeting about this issue and let me think about it and talk to Dan and we'll, we'll come back. We'll, we'll come back with, with some ideas on it. I'll talk to Richard as well.
Any other comments from the board?
I would like to see it underway.
Chuck, have you got anything else?
No, at this point, Ed, we're all set. I spoke to Dan earlier and said that certainly we can, you know, discuss any questions he may have on our comments, you know, later this week. So
Okay.
Just so the board knows, if you're comfortable that, you know, we may do that and I'll certainly inform you, Ed, of what we discussed.
All right.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you.
And have you got anything else you'd like to add while you're with us?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Jackie?
Thank you.
Anything to add before we close the hearing on this today?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is there anything you would like to add?
Just that I'm not real comfortable with what's the applicant is planning to do with phase three, especially when I hear about putting in a road. HOA is going to maintain it, but the future owners of the lots that are using the road are not going to be part of the HOA. And then I hear there's going to be a gate. I think that the applicant's going to need to, as Chuck had asked.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, Chuck, Chuck had asked for a narrative and I think that that's something, you know, the future use of that piece of this parcel needs to be really fleshed out in the narrative.
I agree with you that phase three over there is going to have to be included in the final approval.
All right. Ed, I think, I think, I think you got to wait and see what the applicant, you know, what, what the applicant's plan is. It's, it's the applicant who presents the project. The planning board doesn't design the project. The applicant designs a project and you just identify your concerns and make sure that it complies with the requirements of the town code. But a gate is something that really kind of concerns me.
One quick question on that phase three. Has it been decided if it has to be subdivided off or not?
Well, if you, at some point, if you're going to sell it, it's going to have to be subdivided off. You're going to sell it as a whole parcel.
Just when that, what I'm saying is would it be upfront with this job upfront or later? That, that's what we need, we wanted to discuss. Because I know the road's going through and Stuart, I'll talk to him about the gate and how he, how he wants to make that be used at, you know, the rules and to make everybody comfortable, discuss that. But as far as those nine lots and the road going through part of that and then subdividing that phase three off, I just, if that has to happen now or later.
Well, if you're going to put gates up, you're going to have to do the whole thing, gate and make it a gated community then. Which would require gate houses, you know, somebody there.
Well, not necessarily. What about like Black Forest Colony? They have a small HOA based on acreage and they have a gate to just keep the general public from entering. And the HOA fee based on their acreage maintains the roads. So it's real clean, very simple down there.
It has nothing to do with us. We don't design the homeowners association rule.
I'm just throwing it out. That's, I'm just throwing information out.
We'll get back to you with a, with a design on that. As you said, we'll come back.
But the people in phase one and phase two will be responsible for the road on that separate piece of property through the homeowners association?
If it's going to be an HOA, it would have to be set up that way.
Yeah, but that's going to be a separate parcel and they're not going to be part of the HOA. So.
I didn't, I didn't say it would. We're not, we're not committed to the idea of a separate parcel. And we're not committed to the idea of selling, spinning off the nine lots to a different developer. What I, I said, and let me, I'll say it again. We may allow several different developers to come in and sell them, sell developer A three lots. Sell developer B three lots. Sell developer C three lots. And as long as their design aesthetic and, and size and quality match the parameters, we never said we're going to sell this to one developer. We said we, my preference would be to bring in several people who have several slightly different ideas and approaches and let them bring it alive. So I, 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 I think I'm being a little bit misunderstood. I'm not permitted to spinning that off and we may just put it under one homeowners association. I think there's just, I think we're jumping.
Wasn't under one homeowners association that that wasn't going to be part of it.
I, I said, we were thinking about it.
Well, if it becomes a gated community, it's separate from phase one and two. And phase one and two are going to be responsible for the maintenance and costs of the road.
If it becomes. No, everyone would be responsible for that. No, everyone would have shared responsibility for that road because it's two means of eagerness. I, I think there's a little bit of a miss. Somehow I think we're being a little misunderstood.
No, because before you said phase three was not part of the homeowners association, was not going to be part of the homeowners.
I said we might, it might or might not be. We weren't sure at this point. If it's going to be, if it creates a problem to make it separate, then if, then we'll keep it as part of one. If it's easier to have two, then we'll have two. I, I think we're going to respond. What I said is every, everything we're trying to do is to respond to the market. And the market is a complete change, rapid change. And I think it'll be more as we go through the winter, as we go through the spring, I think things will become more clear. But I think we're, I've seen this happen in New York City a few times where, where events trigger change that happens at a speed that no one really expected. And it's usually very exciting and it's very, it's very positive when these things happen. It also goes the other way, like now. But, but for decades, we've seen neighborhoods turn around in, in, in very short periods. I think that's what's happening here now. And as the winter goes on and as Barry said, I think different ideas are percolating up and I think that we're about to see some very positive changes in this area. And I want to be able to respond to them as we study this all winter and as things become a little bit more clear. I'm not committed to any real hard and fast approach at this point, except I, you know, except what we've put on paper, whether we have one or two. I, I don't think it's necessary to really get hung up on that at this point. We're going to do whatever is best. Whatever makes the most sense, whatever responds to the market and turns this into a, a positive community. That, those are the guidelines. The details will, let me, you know, it's very informative to get these responses and we'll clarify. But it really, we're not bound to any, we're not bound to a gate and we're not bound to any preconceived ideas. We're just, if it's better to kind of direct traffic in one way or another for privacy and noise purposes, I'd, I'd like to kind of try to nudge the traffic in those directions. Creates a big problem with the town board or with the rules, then we won't do it. It's, it's not a lot of people. It's nineteen or twenty homes. So we're not committed to any, we're not, we're not writing anything in stone. We're just trying to feel our way through this and, and, and respond to the changes that are taking place. I, I hope, you know, I'm not, I, I'm hope I'm making it a little more clear.
We'll update that. That's nine homes on phase three. We will update it and come back with a plan.
Now, are you going to be the developer of those homes or are you going to hire somebody to come in and do that?
What, what do you mean by developer?
The first day, who's going to build those houses?
I, we may sell the lots off to individuals. We, we're certainly going to build the chalet. We started that. We, we might have Buddy Brigham build a couple of homes, but we might not. I, I, I think I said, I'm, I'm, my goal is not to build the houses. My goal is to, is to create a master plan for the site that works. And I have, I'm not bound to building those homes. Yeah, you know, those communities where a guy came in and threw up thirty houses are usually not really interesting or not really appealing to the market that I think, well, I'd like to appeal to and maybe the town would like to appeal to, which people are a little bit more individualized now and especially the people coming up here. I don't think anyone wants to come in and be in like Leffert Town on the Delaware. I think they're going to each want to pick their own style, pick their own builder, pick, pick their own location within each lot. I think, you know, we're dealing with a new way of people. Think a new approach. I may build a couple of them. I, I, would you, Barry, is that your sense of it?
Yeah, no, I would agree with that. As long as you have the basic foundation laid out as far as size home, building quality.
Yes.
Certain levels, you know, so you have those basic guidelines and then they can fill it through. Yeah.
Yes, that's how I, you know, without sounding too much like a communist, I think Mao said, let a thousand flowers bloom or something along those lines and doesn't always work under that system. But, you know, I think this is a magnificent piece of land. Narasburg is, is really reaching a whole new new level. Now I see it every weekend. We're living up here this whole year. We, we never expected to be here seven days a week and I love it up here. And I, you could just sense the changes happening and the change has been made much more rapid by COVID and I think you're going to get very individualized people up here. Some of them are going to be, you know, have certain incomes and, and a few for those large lots at the top may be wealthy people and it'll, and I, I think it's going to really make a difference up here. It's going to increase the tax base. It's going to increase the local businesses. I think it's time for this place to, you know, I've been coming up for thirty years. I've always wondered why it never happened and no one ever gave me a good answer. No one ever explained why this area could be two and a half hours from New York City and not be extremely popular. It's magnificent. It's beautiful. It's, it's natural. It's clean. No one ever gave me a good reason why it didn't happen. Now it seems to be happening. So I'm just trying to, you know, play a part in it.
It's all good.
It's all good. The idea here, and I said it in the beginning to different people and I'll repeat it again, th- this thing has to be pleasant and enjoyable and, and, and good. I'm not trying to squeeze the last dollar out of this. And I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, set up my, my, my life's financial plan on this, on this project. I want it to be good and I want it to be beautiful. And those, those are the guiding principles and you know, we're showing you what we have in mind. And I think the way we've set it up comes within those principles. We didn't come in with a, even the plan that was done eight or nine years ago with forty-two units on it, we cut it in half. The idea is to make this thing really interesting and diverse and, and not to be bound to an old fashioned kind of development. I don't think it is. And that's why it never happened to.
Right.
Ed, do you want an update on me just for the, the testing that we're doing or for next time?
I think next time.
Okay.
Did you forward that already to Chuck?
Yes.
Okay.
We got a lot of stuff on the way. Like I said, we got the Septics at the end of October, going to be doing the perks, the well yield tests will be coming. We hired Kathy Mitchell to do the rattlesnake, the wildlife biologist she's hired. We're working on the Seeker. We got, working out with DOT very aggressively on the three entrances right now. So that's all in progress, just to give you an update.
Have you, have you?
Dan, I do believe you mean Kathy Michelle?
Yeah.
Yes, Kathy Knitter.
Mi- Michelle.
Michelle is how she pronounces her last name.
Knitters, who I deal with from DOT.
No, no, we're talking about the rattlesnakes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
It's, it's just like, it's Kathy Michelle.
Correct. Yep, she's been hired. And she'll be doing, you know, between, you know, when, when the leaves are off in November and then in the spring, she's been hired by Stuart to do it. So that's underway.
Have you approached the power company yet?
We talked to them all. Tom did talk to everybody about everything and they want to basically six weeks prior to the new services when they, and everything's been approved is when they want to be notified again. But we did talk to them and showed them the concept.
Are there any other questions from the board this evening? If not, I feel we've touched quite a few bases today and made quite a bit of progress and I think we're moving forward, not at breakneck speed, but moving forward.
Do we have permission to go into very detailed design at this point?
I'll put that before the board, let them get their whole feeling. What is, what is the feeling of the board about them advancing their details?
I'm for it. Ken Bain.
I'm for it.
I'm for it. John Kaufman.
Joe?
Okay, I'm for it.
Mary?
Dustin.
I think that's everybody that's here this evening. I agree too.
I agree too.
Moving forward.
Okay, thank you. We'll get into detailed design and we're close with Chuck.
Jackie has something to say, Ed.
Yeah, since the sketch plan is required, if it is satisfactory, I'm going to recommend that somebody make a motion to accept the sketch plan so that the applicant can move on and provide a preliminary plat.
I will put that motion on the floor. That we accept the sketch plan and move forward.
I'll second. I'll second. Mary will second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 It's a full board.
Thank you.
If we're, if we're off the record now, just, just so we can cut maybe a little bit of, of, of
No, no, no.
Time out of.
No, no, sir, sir.
No, 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 I was, it was about this. Okay, next time. All right, we'll talk about it. I just had an idea about how to do the zoning lots. I just had an idea about how to do the zoning lots.
Nothing, nothing is.
Okay.
Sir, nothing is off the record, ever.
No, I don't mean off the record. I I'm sorry, I I mean, you're closing the meeting. It's not off the record, off the record, I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong word. What I'm saying, in the city, there 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 are. When you, when you, when you're doing development, there's a way of splitting the concept between a tax lot and a zoning. So that, so that the two things, when you you can transfer rights from from one tax lot to the zoning lot next door. Development rights. What I'm thinking on those three large lots, because we don't want to change the nature of the project and create a lot of small lots. If we create. One tax lot and then individual zoning lots within the tax lot. And you can, and specifying the deed that one family must own one tax lot, but and you can't separate. Or reconvey out the zoning lots separately, but but they're only for zoning purposes. Is that something that may may, is that something that's remotely?
No.
Not even on the table.
No, well, that's not, that's not how it works up here. No, not an option.
Because that's how in the city, one guy did it with, he got knocked down in court, he did it with sixty-two lots. And and they they built a sixty-story building that way. But anyway, all right, I was just thinking there may be a simple solution, but I guess not. All right. Thank you.
All right, I'll see you guys all next month. Chuck, you can go too.
Very much.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Very, very helpful meeting. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. This is Dan Griffiths.
Okay, we'll see you all next month.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before the board, we still have, and I send it to everybody, uh. Two lots combo.
Three.
I'm sorry.
Lots then. And they're all in the realm, they'll end up to be a two. They'll end up to be a two hundred by two hundred parcel. It's on what's now Max Lane was formerly Short Road. The people have a house number eighteen and two vacant lots they want to include on it. They just changed the name. One of the lots was just in the wife's name previously, so now all are in joint name. So it looks like a good idea to get a little bit bigger parcel in the Luxton Lake area.
And that's been our goal, is to to try and clean Luxton Lake up to get it to where it's buildable.
Right.
I will put a motion on the on the floor. That we accept the three lot combination.
I'll second that.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So carried. That being the end of business, I'll put a motion on the floor that we adjourn.
Ed, you had asked about the trees up at the solar farm.
Oh, I forgot, I'm sorry, I forgot all about that. Yeah, did everybody get a chance to go up and look at that?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, I did too.
We planted them a lot of trees on top of the ground to make them look like they're eight to ten feet, but they're really only about six foot trees. Six and seven footers. There's a few eights, maybe one or two tens, but most of them are short ones.
I asked Jim about that, and he said they weren't planted on top of the ground, that was just heaped up around them.
No, they're up on top of the ground.
They were on top.
I said, I sent a picture.
I got the picture, yes.
It looks like the ball was put on top of the ground and dirt was thrown around them.
Yep.
They're not eight to ten foot trees like we required them to put there.
Yeah, I didn't know that. That was a. Well, some of them have little things up on the top that probably make them ten feet.
Right, they don't count when you go buy a tree.
It's good for a Christmas tree, but that's about it. All right, I will, I will sit down with Jim again and we'll review it again.
And I don't think he put as many as he said he was putting there.
They said seventy trees.
There, I, sorry. This is Lisa DeAndre. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to interrupt at this.
This is, this is not an open meeting.
Okay. Bye, Paul.
I think he might have seventy trees total, counting the ones he had there before. He was supposed to do, I think, seventy.
Seventy plus, well, no, he was supposed to take the other ones back out.
No, they're still there.
Win.
Yeah, they're all in, Joe.
He left them there and he's counting those.
Yep.
And the thing I noticed is he didn't mix them together. He put a whole bunch of white pines. Then a bunch of blue spruces and then a bunch of whatever.
Yeah.
No, I'll talk to Jim tomorrow. He's in tomorrow.
Yeah, I know, it's not what we asked for. And then I know when we first brought it up, probably a year ago or whatever. He was supposed to maintain that lot and cut the grass.
Yeah.
That was never done this year, and I don't ever remember talking about sheep cutting the grass.
I don't remember that either.
Right, and that's, I have a problem with the sheep part. He's supposed to maintain it, he hasn't done that. He's supposed to plant those trees, he hasn't done that.
I did look on the original map and the trees did end right there where Evergreen makes the turn.
Okay. But he didn't put what we required.
No, no, there's nowhere near it.
And he didn't cut the grass.
I was hoping he'd be here this evening because I wanted him to send me a letter from his landscape engineer, or architect, rather. He accepted what's there.
Yeah, because I know when we first brought this up, he said he was going to have someone to maintain the. The grass in there. That was one of the questions we had brought up that time, and it just never was done.
I think they cut it one time.
They cut outside the fence, not inside the fence.
They cut inside one time. I saw, I saw the machine in there. They had a brush hog getting there. Which is not a mower, it's just, you know.
Right. But I think we, it should be done more than once a year, especially at the beginning. I was cutting my plate once a week.
Oh, I know, everybody was. And I don't think, I don't know if they seeded that or just whatever natural came up. I don't believe it was seeded either.
It wasn't seeded. It's just all weeds in there.
Yeah. All right, I'll speak to Jim about it and we'll see what we can do if there's anything. Any other business?
No.
I have a question on um, paper roads.
On what?
Paper roads.
Yeah.
I had uh, some people in town asking about the paper road between their properties and if they could buy it. And I told them to call you.
No, they have to call the county. Don't you remember when they sold all the paper roads the last time?
I thought we were, we were dipping those out, I thought through us.
No, they sold them, I'm pretty sure.
What about the ones we sold in town?
Well, that was through the, the county has to approve it, then it goes to the town board. We have nothing to do with that.
Okay, so who do they contact at county?
I would assume planning.
Okay. I'll direct them there.
Where where are you talking about? Which which road?
Well, the house that I just sold on on Twenty-Eight Lake Street. Uh, supposedly there's a paper road between that and the burning property up above on Oak. And they said there was a paper road, and what could they do to uh, own that? And I said, well, I mean, give Ed a call to say, you know.
It would have to be half and half.
Right, and I told them that. So either one buys all of it, if if the other one refuses, it's fifty fifty or one buys all.
Yeah. Tell tell him to get in touch with the supervisor, maybe he can help them on that. That's that's out of our wheelhouse.
You mean Ben, have them contact Ben?
Yeah.
Okay. Will do.
Anything else come before the board this evening? I want to thank you all for attending and thank Jackie for her help this evening. Thank you very much. Mike, how have you been?
Ed, I've been fine. I'm glad to see that you're carrying on there in your inimitable fashion.
Just as a report, I am walking with a cane now, that's it.
Well, that's good. That that's good progress.
Yeah, yeah, I'm getting this, but we're sure.
You're on the upward trail.
Yeah, yeah. If there's nothing else to come before the board, uh. I'll put a motion on the table to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll see you all next month. Thank you again very much.